Everyone, to tonight's Bennington Select Board meeting. It is Monday, March 13th. We are in the Bennington Fire Facility. I am Jeanne Jenkins and I have the pleasure of chairing this board. I'll ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves, starting with Tom.
Hi, Tom Haley. Thanks for coming.
Hi, I'm Jean Conner.
Good evening, Bruce Lee Clark.
Lovely. Okay, so we do have a quorum tonight. It's, it's, yes, we have a quorum tonight. Also with us tonight, we have Stu Hurd, our town manager, Nancy Lyer, who takes excellent minutes every single meeting, and Josh Boucher, who is great on CAT TV, and we are so thankful to CAT TV for filming this. So let's start as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. Who would like to lead us in the pledge tonight? Who's?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bruce. And Jeanne, would you read our vision statement that guides all our work?
Yes, I will. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much. All right, so first up on the agenda, or next on the agenda, is the Consent Agenda, which the minutes of February 27th warrants no licenses for the purposes of discussion. Could I have a motion to accept?
Some moved, including the material that we received today. Correct.
That is correct. They are there.
And there was an additional.
It's a new tobacco license and.
Oh, okay.
As part of the licensing.
Just licenses, I thought.
Oh, okay, the licenses are in here.
And there was another one that came in during the day.
Second, okay, discussion. Okay, any, any discussion? No? Anything for Nancy on the Bennetts?
Nope.
Stuart on the ones? No? All right, so then, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, great, thank you. Next up is public comment, and we have three individuals that would like to speak tonight. Deb, you're up first on senior center.
I'm very concerned about what's going on with the senior center. When the talk started about the Ben High project, we were told that we would have double the space. And every time an update comes out, we get less and less. I found out last week that you took a bathroom out, so the senior center no longer had a bathroom in the senior area. But I've heard today that they've put it back in. I was looking for a new copy of the map layout, and I spoke with Dan today, and he told me there wasn't one available until April. The last one I got was back in November. And he said that there was only minor changes. Well, if they're going to take the bathroom away, I don't consider that a minor change. And I wonder what other things have been done. The town has promised the senior center that they would take care of us for years, and I don't consider sticking us under the Y, taking care of us. At the meeting last month, I asked the question if you were going to put us under the Y, and not a single person here answered me. So in my book, when I don't get an answer on something like that, the answer's not something I want to hear. I took it as a yes. And you didn't have the backbone to tell me that. And parking in this town has been a big issue with me, and I think the parking at the Ben High, if you force us up there, is going to be a bigger problem. And the last time I talked with Jonah about the space, he admitted that we're going to get less than 25 percent more space. And I found it interesting that one time when I was talking with him, because we currently have two bathrooms, and in the new plans, they were only going to go to one, and instantly he deducted the square footage for the one bathroom that was being taken away. And seniors are the fastest-growing demographic, so that we will need more space. And I don't consider shared spaces as something that is good for the seniors for planning functions and get-togethers or whatever, because shared space is, there's got to be a calendar with somebody controlling the calendar as to who gets to use that space. So if we make plans for something the second Tuesday of next week, are we going to have access to it? Who's going to have top priority? Who's going to be deciding who's going to get the space and the use of it? And there was a post in the, it was in the paper about getting to see the, how do you call it? The grant from Hale for the million dollars for the Ben High. Well, I went over today, and there's a sign on the door that says, "No walk-ins." So I went and I called, and I have not heard back from them. They did not return my call. And I was wondering if the board could get me a copy of that, rather than playing phone tag with Hale. So I don't know, it's like beating a dead horse here. Every time something comes up and we discuss it, it just gets swept under the rug, and it's hard for a lot of seniors to come to these meetings because they don't drive after dark. And then, of course, with the possible storm today, they're not going to come out either. And I have to tell you, when I go to bone builders, it's one of the first things I get asked, "Hey Deb, what's happening? What's happening?" So I don't feel you've been honest and upfront with us, and I don't know what more I can say, other than it seems like it doesn't matter what we say or do, it's not going to matter.
Thanks, Deb. That was a pretty sobering assessment from your perspective. I think, I'm assuming that.
I can respond to every single one of those.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm thinking maybe we have a new, maybe we have a new update coming once the new board is seated, anyway. But if you would like to, go, please, please do so.
Unfortunately, Deb has misinformation, and I apologize for that. I don't know how you got it. We have not made any final changes to the, to the, to the floor plans. We're looking at it, there are historic preservation requirements that we need to make some minor modifications, but no reduction in square footage, no reduction in bathrooms. In fact, it's, most people would not be able to see the changes that are proposed when they looked at the plans. And we also do not have those finalized yet. Once they are finalized, we will share them with the public, they'll post it online, and we will have a comment in question, period. And I know that Shannon and Jonah will meet personally with the seniors to talk about any changes. So the bathroom information she has is incorrect. We've never, never thought about reducing the bathrooms. The change in square footage is incorrect. We've never contemplated reducing the square footage. As far as parking is concerned, I have arranged to have a parking study done by the Bennington County Regional Commission. So we will be looking at parking demand and real data for what is needed versus reality versus perception. But I will state clearly that there will be more parking spaces for seniors at Ben High than there are at the current senior center. Significantly more reserved specifically for them. So parking should not be an issue for the seniors. As far as the Hale application, that's their application. It's not a town application. But Shannon may be able to give more information about that. And as far as the management of the senior center, we don't have any decisions regarding that going into the future. So to say that we've been dishonest, we have nothing to share because there've been no decisions made, so.
So in response to the grant application that you mentioned, and the Hales are here and can also speak to that, that's a community development block grant that they've applied for, for the housing piece. And those actually do, they're awarded to the town, and then they're sub-granted, in this case, for affordable housing. And at this point, it's just the pre-application, but I do have access to that, Deb, so if you want me to print that out so that you can look at the application, I can do that.
All right, so it sounds like all of those issues are cleared up.
Well, can I just ask one quick question?
Sure.
Dan, when you say finalized, when a plan is finalized, what do you mean by that? I think that's an important distinction that needs to be clear.
So when I say finalized, when we've made some preliminary decisions about what it's going to look like, it doesn't mean that it will not change again.
Right.
But if it is, if it does change, people will be notified. But I can say that there are no, absolutely no substantive changes made to the initial plan. Square footages are all virtually identical. We did have to make some changes to deal with historic preservation. You can't move certain walls and certain things like that.
Right.
But the square footage remains the same, the program remains the same, all the rooms' functions that the rooms were supposed to take care of remain the same, so.
And programmatic decisions regarding the senior center would be made by the Select Board at any case?
That's right.
Is that not at an open meeting with discussion and all the rest?
Absolutely.
So it might be that the reason why we had no answer was because we have not had that on the agenda, and it has not been an open discussion yet.
Right. It will be, but it hasn't been.
I was going to say, we have also not.
We've not.
We've not seen anything since the last update because it's still in progress.
We've gotten several maps with the different changes in them.
So you have, you have more information than we do.
You are certainly getting something that I'm not getting.
Sure, we hear before. But I agree, I don't feel we should be using the word "final," because when he said "final," I thought, well, why are we going to discuss it if this is the final?
The only people who can make this final is this board.
Finalization presentation.
Thank you. That's, that's very helpful. That's a nice way of putting it. Thank you.
Okay, so, we're good?
No. Are we going to the other one?
We, nothing like that has ever been even discussed on the board.
It hasn't been decided. It's not been discussed. It will be open, it will be open discussion, okay?
Twice.
Right, and we don't answer what we don't know, because we've never discussed it.
Nobody told me any.
Oh, okay.
All right, all right, let's move on. I think we've done as much as we can there. LPG train, Isabel and David.
My name is Isabel Harper. I'm a resident of Bennington, and I'm a student at Bennington College. It's great to see you again. Thanks so much for your time. I was here with some classmates of mine and with David a couple of times in December, and I just wanted to come back and reiterate that we're concerned about the storage of LPG tankards in the residential area near Rice Lane. We have three main points on this train that I want to once again emphasize, and the first is that, though, they are said to be safe. The handful of times that this type of train have leaked or derailed, the consequences have been catastrophic, and we have seen evidence of that last month in East Palestine, Ohio. So, yeah, we wanted to talk about how, what we were discussing hypotheticals has happened, and the results were completely devastating for that community, and that is a danger that is also present here in our community. My second point is that no new jobs are created for our town, no tax revenues added. Again, I said this at the last meeting, but I just want to reemphasize. And the last one is that we think that there are concrete actions that this board could take. I'm not going to run through it again, because, again, you know, we discussed this before, but I just want to say that we are still concerned. There's growing concern, particularly, I know, with youth in the community. And we would love to see the Select Board take a leading role in addressing this, and there would be lots of support for you to do so. So I'm going to pass it over to David, but I just want to say thank you so much again for your time and attention, and we hope that you will consider to, to think about this as we are.
Isabel, can I just ask?
Yeah.
When we last spoke, there were, there were updates, there were specific requests that we made of you. And I'm wondering if you can update us on any of the actions that you took that we requested from you. And also, if you could, we were told that, not that it, not that, maybe it doesn't matter, but we were told that the, these tankers were different in that they were reinforced, which was unlike the case. So it would be nice if you haven't done that research, if you would do that research as well. And, you know, but if you can update us on any of the actions that we, this board requested that you make, that would be great.
Can you remind us what those requests were? Because I think we did, but we would love to hear them.
It was reach out, the major one was to reach out to other communities.
Yes.
And bring back information from other communities on any actions that they actually found would be helpful and actually something that made a difference.
Yep.
Second, we asked that you join us in bugging our delegation, a congressional delegation, who has still not supplied the WAY bill, which is the path forward, as far as our town council has said. And there was one more. Do you even remember what the other, the other thing we wanted them to help us with?
I don't remember. Your memory is astounding.
Those were the two that I remembered.
Yeah, but those two, you know, if you could, it was helping us with.
Yes.
Congressional delegation.
Yep.
And it was doing the work on the ground, because you guys made a statement that other communities were moving forward.
Yes.
So we wanted to know what they had done that actually worked.
Yep, so.
So that would be helpful.
Yeah, really quickly, I just wanted to say, that's really helpful to know that you received feedback about the reinforcement of these cars. Just, I wanted to quickly mention, because I forgot to say it earlier, in the case in Ohio, though, in that derailment, there was road access, and it was a controlled burn for two days, and they had to evacuate the entire community. In this case, the cars do not have road access, so it could potentially be even more catastrophic for our community. And, yeah, and I'll, I'll let David speak in more depth, but we have released a couple opinion pieces, which I can absolutely be, it can be made available to everybody here, but we addressed some pretty specific points from the last time we met.
My name is David Bond, a resident of North Bennington, and I teach at the college. To come immediately to the point, we published a second opinion piece in the banner that went through all of those requests. And so if you didn't see that, I'm happy to send it to you.
I read what you wrote in the paper, but it.
There was no specifics about what other communities.
Portland, Maine was the best example we found.
I think if you can send us detailed information about other communities, because the.
The attachment could be helpful.
Yes, so, to clarify a couple things. We reached out to a couple of communities. There's a lot of concern about the issue, not a lot of precedent that's really clear, crystal clear about it. Portland, Maine had a port where they were bringing in a lot of oil and loading it onto tankers, and the community sued for the risk it posed to a poor marginalized community on that, and they were successful. And that was the community we had reached out to and talked to that we put in the banner as one example that the town might think with about how to address this issue. And I'm happy to share that banner article with everybody.
Can you, can you clarify that that was a federal-owned rail line?
It was a, it was, it was an issue that was contested on transportation grounds, and the community, no?
No.
Is it a federally-owned line? Because that seems to be the sticking point.
Oh, federal preemption is, yeah.
It's not federally owned, the railway isn't federally owned, as I understand it, but there's, the federal preemption is the concern.
Right. Correct.
Okay, well, whatever.
Is it analogous situation?
It seemed like it overlapped a little, not completely, but it overlapped enough to think about. When we reached out to communities that were sort of trying to do something, Portland, Maine seemed to be the one that had gotten the most success in voicing their concerns about the risks that the fossil fuel infrastructure was posing to a community with very little gain to the community, and they contested it in court, and they won.
So David, what would be helpful for us? What we have been told by council is that we cannot act on this.
Yes.
At this point. The WAY bill may give us an opening.
Yes.
If we can get it, and that if there are any communities who have actually dealt with this, an analogous situation with, with federal law.
Yep.
Then, then that's helpful. Otherwise, we are all in agreement that we are unhappy that we have this situation.
Yeah, yes.
But, but it doesn't help us to, it doesn't help to harangue us if there's nothing that we can do. So if you can help us.
Yeah, yeah.
Either see a precedent that actually is analogous.
Yeah.
And/or help shake the congressional delegation a little.
Yes.
We would appreciate it.
Nothing in our comments should be interpreted in any way, shape, or form as haranguing or harassing our wonderful Select Board. That is not what we're trying to do.
We love you.
But there is a real concern, and we want to figure out how to, how to make some headway on it. So the, I'll send the banner article around, the Portland case seemed to be the most relevant to me of a community trying to stand up. We also reached out to the Vermont delegation. We heard back from Sanders, and they were supposed to report back to us. I have sent multiple emails, that was December, and I've sent multiple emails to the staffers that we talked to, and they are just not responding. So that's now, I've sent, I've sent an email, I think.
Welcome to our world.
Every two weeks, from January, February till now, and I have not got a response from the staffers that we met with. As a class, we met with the Sanders staffers. So we are also, and we will continue to do that, to push out the Vermont delegation. Welch, I think, was still getting set up, and so we're, we'll start that again this spring to push on Welch as well.
Citation on the Maine case would be very helpful. You know what I mean by a citation?
Yes.
Okay, send me the, send us the citation.
I will, I will get that, and I will send it to you. So I had three, one question for you all to clarify, and then three other very concrete things that we might do together. The first question to you, is Vermont Rail investing in the spur right now? That spur, as I understand it, is only used for the storage of these tankers. There seems to be some investment in improving that line and making an additional line, which seems to be a way where they could store even more tankers on that line. Is that something that's underway? It's sort of hard to get a sense of what it is, but if you drive on the highway and look over, you can see they've actually constructed a parallel track behind Subaru, behind Home Depot sort of area, but.
It's, yeah, that's the rail trail project, isn't it?
It's the runaround.
It's the runaround track.
Is that going to let them store more tankers in our community?
Not if they want to use it for a runaround, but, you know, that'll be their decision.
Because there's now a parallel track, right? Right where they're storing them.
There has to be, because you have to, in order to, well, I won't get into rail.
Dan, do you want to speak to the rail trail, why this is, why, what's happening there?
So the rail improvements were required by the railroad as part of the extreme price we had to pay to get our rail trail from the, from the railroad. So that runaround track basically replaces a runaround track that was closer to town that is now part of our rail trail. So it's not really new infrastructure, per se, it just moves it further outside of town.
Okay, okay. So at least there's a reason for it.
My concern will be this summer, as they start to bring those tankers back, do they use that parallel track to store even more tankers in our community?
Yeah, we have no jurisdiction with the rail, unfortunately.
So the three concrete things that we all can do together, you in particular, we're happy to help, again, write another letter to the Vermont delegation, congressional delegation in response to Ohio. Here's, here's a case of a small rural community that's devastated by the, a train derailment. It's in the news, and everyone's talking about it. Senator Sanders and others have been very vocal in congressional hearings, and it's an opportunity to demand a sort of clarification from our community about the similar risks that we face. Two, it'd be great to write a letter to the Federal Rail Administration. We've reached out several times, but they don't seem to be responding to us, but it'd be great as the Bennington Select Board to request clarification on the issue of storing LPG tankers in residential neighborhoods, which we've brought up before. The third is the new issue, to write the Surface Transportation Board, it was just, actually, it came to my email today, that the Surface Transportation Board could potentially reclassify that rail line from a spur to a rail yard if it's used primarily for storage, and a rail yard would open it up to more local rules and oversight. So right now, it's classified as a spur, which is a bit harder to get at locally. If it was, if, if the town petitioned the Surface Transportation Board to reclassify it as a rail yard, since its primary purpose is storage, it would bring it in a little closer to something the Select Board could do something about.
So what is the Surface Transportation Board? I mean.
It's a federal agency that oversees the classification of rail.
Yeah, right. So, I mean, you know, these seem like these are possible things to do.
Yeah.
Have we, I know we have been bugging our congressional delegation. Have we done anything with the Federal Rail Administration or whatever the Surface Transportation Board is?
No.
Do we know what those are?
This, yes, you do. The support that Vermont Rail has from the state of Vermont makes it virtually impossible for anything to happen to change that particular spur.
Right.
Until we get the state of Vermont to want to put some pressure on Vermont Rail, there will be no change.
So is, is our time better spent putting, are you talking about putting pressure on our federal, federal delegation or on state legislature?
It's, it's a political problem, it's not legal.
Have you spoken with Brian Campion about this?
Yes, and Sears.
And?
All support.
Of?
Of, of doing something, of finding a way forward. They, the last time I talked to Senator Campion and Senator Sears, they recommended it's the Select Board or the federal congressional delegation to do something.
That's, I think that's back to that passive environment.
Here are the facts about Vermont Railway. It is, it is supported heavily financially by the state of Vermont. And the state, we have requested the state of Vermont multiple times to use that financial leverage to help us in various issues with the railroad. To date, they have refused to do so, and there is no likelihood that they ever will. It's a very, very strong lobby. For whatever reason, the state transportation, the state rail folks are 100% supportive, and so is the administration. So if you want to, if you think that you can be successful in pressuring the state of Vermont to use their financial leverage on the railroad, that would be your most likely way forward. I will tell you that we have tried for years, and we have been told over and over and over, the railroad is protected and has been protected through every single administration in the last 50 years. So that's the reality.
The last little point I'll say is that, like, if, if something goes wrong with one of these trains, it's no longer, right now, a hypothetical. Everybody gets their head around, they have images of, they know exactly what it looks like if something goes wrong with one of these trains. That's an opportune moment to reach out and sort of put pressure again on all of these groups.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I'm thinking, I'm thinking that Stu and Dan, I would love for you to sort of, if you, I mean, I think, Dan, you've laid it out, but I think if we can look at, what are the, outside of this meeting, what are the two best pressure points, and who do we need as partners to make, you know, to make something happen? Because clearly, our federal delegation doesn't, isn't responding to us, it isn't responding to you guys. That feels a little bad. We voted for them, so, which seems sort of like a ridiculous situation. So maybe it's catching them when they're, you know, doing their tours of the state, maybe? I'm not sure, but it feels like if the federal delegation is the key to making anything happen, if we're not going to be able to put pressure on the state to make change, then maybe we need to up the pressure on the federal delegation.
A legislative tour of the site?
Yeah. That's a good idea. Should we organize?
Take them out there.
Maybe, maybe our two county senators could organize a site tour. Would you be willing to take on the Senators Campion and Sears?
The trains start coming in early summer.
Right.
So they start getting parked there early summer.
So have they left, they've left for the season, then? Is that what?
The tracks are clear right now.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, there.
But they'll start coming early summer, and they'll build up to, it's one between 100 to 160 hog tankers. They get parked there, and then they start coming out in November.
Okay, so let's, let's see if we can organize a site tour when they're here, and, and in the process, I think, just remind Campion and Sears that we aren't getting any response from our congressional delegation on the WAY bill, which seems to be the way forward. Thank you. Thank you for. forward. Thank you. Thank you for putting the pressure up.
I would assume, I would assume one of them, one of the congressional folks, will be in Bennington between now and summer, and we should not let them leave until they've gone out to look.
Yeah, except there's nothing there. We need to wait till the track.
Well, there is something to see.
I mean, there's a track there.
There's a track there, and there are houses within reasonable...
And we have pictures of the, of the trains at those houses, so taking them and showing them what it looks like, I think would be...
This is what it is. Yep.
Okay, all right. But if you can get any, any information about other communities that have actually been successful in this, in this situation.
Well, there's a community in Ohio that's desperate to figure out what to do.
Sure.
And we don't want to be there.
Right, we don't want to be them, yes. We're all in agreement on this. Okay, all right, thank you. Nancy, Ben High.
Nancy White, Bennington. Um, I just had a quick, a couple of quick questions on the Ben High, but I do need to add to what Deb said. Before you gave the Y the agreement to manage the rec center and afterwards, Bennington seniors were promised that the town, not the Y, would continue to manage, um, the town senior center as they have for 45 years. Bennington seniors were promised that they would be left at the senior building. And it's shocking to me how everyone has totally disregarded concerns that seniors have shown for their health. It was, I don't know, between four and six years ago, a group wanted to put kids at the senior center before and after the seniors were there, and there was a lot of discussion. The Select Board had a discussion, and they decided they didn't want to put the health of seniors at risk to pick up colds and other things with the kids, and this with the kids being there before and after. I remember Don Campbell saying he wouldn't want to put his elderly father in that situation. So the Select Board had this discussion, and this idea of putting the seniors right at the main entrance, everybody coming in and out of the building, the noise, the cold air, the view out the window is going to be a brick wall. At the senior building, they're on the second floor, it's quiet, they have nice views. Um, and again, the only reason they're being forced to the Ben High is money. So I think it's unfair what we're doing to Bennington seniors. Many of them are the ones who have helped pay the budget for the senior building and senior center for the 45 years that we've had it. But my question's on the Ben High. Who is actually paying to buy the Ben High?
So Nancy, I'm going to reiterate, and I apologize that I did not go over the rules for public comment. The rules for public comment are, this is a time to bring information to the community that benefits all. Now, there have been multiple, multiple, uh, updates on Ben High, and as things develop, there have been meetings. We'll have another one in April, and you are welcome to come. Uh, it will be a public meeting, it will be during a Select Board meeting, and as we figure, as, as the, um, as the town and their, their private partner, uh, identify pathways forward, they're going to bring it to us for consideration.
Who, who's the private partner?
Hale Resources, which I, which is widely, widely known. That is not a secret. Um, and they were part of a huge presentation, what, several months ago, October?
And I raised concerns at the town budget meeting in January, that you haven't been putting this $20 million project on the agenda to keep the public updated. I don't think you've said anything in January and February. I think in December, Dan spoke for a few minutes. According to this agreement that you authorized Stu and Chris Gilbert to sign, it says the town of Bennington, the taxpayers are buying to buy the, are paying to buy the Ben High. Is that still the case?
That is a long-term lease agreement. Do you, um, Dan, do you want to speak to this as well?
Well, and...
This is just your moment. So, so Nancy, Nancy, there is, there is so much information on the web, there is so, on the town website.
Jeannie, I have the signed agreement here.
It's a long-term lease. And Nancy, as you know, if you attended the last meeting on Ben High, the Hales were here, the town was here, the architect was here, there was time to, they broke out into sessions afterwards where you could ask any question that you wanted. The public, what, the public was invited to stay as long as they needed to to get their answers to their questions. So what I'm going to say is there will be another session in April. Much of your information is not accurate, and it's really, really hard to answer you, and public comment is not the time for discussion anyway.
Well, you just had, you just had a public discussion with the gentleman in front of me.
We did, we did.
I've been trying to get answers since early 2021.
Then I would say, start attending the, the Ben High sessions, okay? And there'll be another one in April.
So is this agreement still in effect or no?
It is, yes.
It is still in, in effect?
Yeah.
So the town of Bennington taxpayers are paying to buy the Ben High?
Well, it's a lease. It's a long-term lease.
It's a long-term lease.
Lease and purchase agreement.
Yes.
And how much will we, will be, we be paying to buy the Ben High? And who's going to own it? Well, a lot of people in town don't understand who's going to own the building, the town or the Hales.
So Nancy, what I would say to you is come to the meeting in April when there is more information available, okay? So I, um, you know, I...
I'm just going by the agreement that you authorized Stu and Chris to sign.
Nancy, anything else you have on your mind?
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask you the same thing I asked you last March when you announced this, and you said Shires was going to have 70% of the Ben High. And I asked what they would pay the Bennington taxpayers to buy 70%. You wouldn't answer the question, so I'll ask tonight. Will the Hales be paying the Bennington taxpayers to buy 70% of the Ben High from us?
So Nancy, the next update is in April, and what we hope at that point is that the public-private partnership will come to us with, um, with their sense of how this will work, how the money will work, how, what, what, um, what sources of funding are available to make this work, and give us a full package. I think that is the, um, the last time we had an update, what, um, town staff assured us was that they would be coming back with a much clearer picture for us.
But I'll remind you...
And Nancy, I'm just going to say, can we show up at the meeting in April?
Your, your public partners, your public partners are the town of Bennington taxpayers? Who, of course we are. Where do you think you're going to get 1.1 million to buy the building? And who paid for...
It's a long-term lease, Nancy.
It says lease-to-purchase agreement.
Right, exactly, that's what it says.
And, and who paid for the senior building for the past 45 years? The town of Bennington taxpayers.
Please.
And all these, this has all been said many times, and it's also on our website, so it's not new information, but I'll reiterate for folks, oh, no, no. So the town does have a long-term lease with the current owner of Chris Gilbert. It's an assignable lease, we can assign it to whoever we want to, we can terminate it whenever we want. It is a, it is a method of site control so that we own, we have own control, we don't own the property, we have site control of the property so that we can, we can, um, redevelop it with our public-private partner. It has been publicly stated at least two times, uh, at the, at the meetings that we've had, and it's also on the website, that the most likely scenario, we do not have a final word yet, but the most likely scenario is that Hale Resources will buy and own the property. I do not expect that that will change between now and April. That is the most likely scenario. So to say that the town is going to purchase it as of this moment, that is not the plan, and it is unlikely to change.
Thank you, Dan, for the clarification.
Yeah.
Okay, so anyone else in the public like to speak tonight? Okay, all right. So, thank you all. Um, so next up is Casella contract extension. Stu?
Yes, this, this is relatively straightforward. Uh, our contract with Casella, I'm sorry.
Our contract with Casella expired December 31st, 2022. Uh, we have been renegotiating uh, an extension of that agreement, uh, through December 31st, 2026. Uh, this is what I've placed before you. Uh, this agreement, uh, clarifies how the recycling charges are currently done. Uh, the prior contract, uh, did not do that, and the way recycling charges and recycling costs are shared has changed dramatically since the loss of recycling markets, uh, to the extent where we, that is, the town of Bennington, is not actually paying to have materials recycled, uh, where in the past, we actually made some money on the cost of those recyclables. This clarifies that. It also provides an inflationary, uh, index, uh, for the charges at the transfer station so that they may increase on an annual basis based on the CPIU of Boston, uh, which is generally the standard we use here in Bennington for adjusting for things for inflationary, uh, matters. Uh, what has happened in the past is those rates have stagnated. Uh, they've been in place for 10 to 11 years, and then when they finally get around to asking for a change, it's a dramatic jump, and everybody freaks out. So this will allow those prices to raise, uh, with inflation, uh, over time. And I would need, should you agree, uh, authorization to sign this extension, uh, for the town of Bennington.
For the purposes of discussion, I would move that, that this, the manager be authorized to sign this, uh, extension of the agreement with Casella Waste Management.
Do you have a second?
Sorry.
Great, thank you. Discussion?
I, I would just say that, considering the nature of, um, waste management and, and how it has changed dramatically in the market for recycling, this is about the most responsible way to go about doing this work. Um, also, knowing how much this board does not like going through and every single time saying, okay, we're going to raise the tip fee for a bag of trash to buy 25 cents, um, I think this, this makes sense.
Any other discussion? No? All right, so hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed in abstentions? All right.
Thank you.
You're good to go. All right, and now, um, implementing the town vision, do we have anything under this C part of the list?
I have a meeting.
Okay, is a meeting?
Meeting.
Isn't, this, this Thursday? Okay.
Thursday. I believe it's going to be to 5:30, but I'll check tomorrow.
Okay, so five, so we think 5:30 here?
I think 5:30 is...
Okay, all right, all right, good, all right. Anything else? No? All right, then on to the manager's report.
Okay, and this will too, will be brief. Uh, this is a brief evening. Um, we have a request from Queer Connect, uh, to hold its annual pride event Sunday, June 25th, from noon until 5:00 PM. Uh, the event will, uh, include a parade, which will start at Hemmings Motor News and move east along Main Street, concluding at Main and School. Uh, following the parade, uh, the, uh, there will be a block party that is planned, uh, and that is the reason we're here tonight. They would need to close Pleasant Street from north to school, and school from Main to Pleasant. Uh, and I'm seeking a motion to allow those streets to be closed on June 25th, uh, from noon until 5:00 PM. Uh, they have met with the, the PD and have their special events permit, uh, I believe, in hand.
And that's a, that's a Saturday or Sunday?
It's actually a Sunday.
And is there any concern with traffic from the UU and St. Peters?
Uh, I think, I think the, the fact that it, the party, it doesn't start till noon is, is one of the reasons it's being pushed back, is to, to avoid that.
Okay.
And just quickly, one other question, the, I hate to be bottom of the chat, but, um, the banners, the wonderful banners will go up on the poles that are along the parade route, do you think?
I, I would believe that they would probably be up for the month of June, that's what we usually do.
That's right, that would be wonderful.
Good.
I, I, yeah, second.
I forgot we didn't do that.
Oh, yeah, okay. All right, uh, so, um, yes, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, good, okay.
And just a couple of follow-up things. Uh, as some people may have already noticed, uh, Casella Construction is, is operating, uh, to replace lead service lines on Elm Street. Uh, I believe they began today. Uh, probably won't work tomorrow, but, um, uh, that work has begun. Uh, it's a, uh, $1.2 million project. Uh, it is on scattered sites throughout the community, so, uh, pay attention to the banner. Generally, we post our work schedules in the banner, uh, Thursday or Friday morning, uh, so follow those, uh, because you will be advised when, which streets we'll be working on as we move around the community for the lead service line replacement project. And, and please understand, this is fully reimbursed by the state of Vermont. So this is no cost to the taxpayers or the individuals who are receiving the new service lines. Um, as I say, the, the Benmont Avenue County Street project is done, we've resurfaced to the extent we can County Street. Uh, it seems to be holding. Uh, weather tomorrow may tax us a little bit, uh, but we will be back in the spring to pave, and we were going to plan to fix the sidewalks anyway along that section of County Street, so that will also be done in the spring. And we've already talked about the rail cars, so that's all I've got.
Okay, all right, lovely. Okay, other, um, let's see, upcoming agenda?
Uh, yes, I think next time we have the proclamation on Career Week, is that scheduled generally?
For your month, yes, yes.
And we will have the Malones, uh, on the Chelsea, is it Chelsea, Dan? Or, yeah, Chelsea project, the solar project, um, unless there is a change in, in that schedule, they will be before us on March 27th.
Okay, and then I think the Bennington Sports Foundation is planning to come as well, so, all right.
And what about, um, the skate park?
I would expect we'd have a presentation in late April.
Late April, okay, okay. Good, great, okay. Other business, huh?
Um, we all know St. Patrick's Day is coming up, and if your celebrations include alcohol or whatever it is you use to celebrate, please make responsible transportation decisions. In other words, don't drive. Thanks.
I don't have anything.
Just one quick question, um, and this is probably for Dan, I think. At the beginning of the rail trail by the, by here, down here, is, is the plan eventually, and maybe Shannon knows this because you mentioned it, I think, in your, is the plan to put a curb cut in that section where the trail begins?
We've already put in a change order with our contractor, and that'll be done in the spring.
Great, thank you. I've had several people ask, and I...
Somehow we missed it in the last 25 years when we were designing it, but it will be done.
I, I figured it would be, thank you. Now...
And also, um, is it possible to put a handicap, to put a spur from the, from the, the fire station parking lot right out here onto the rail trail so that in the winter wheelchairs can actually go from the, it's the way we did the, it's the way we did the walk. So just going directly from parking here instead of parking across the street? Can we do that?
I'll take your point, you can maybe start about...
Oh, just a path, just a, a paved path that goes...
A paved path from the parking lot over to the rail trail.
Which parking, which parking lot?
This one.
This one.
Out back.
Excuse me.
Okay, yeah, that would be lovely, all right.
I was just not thinking about which parking lot.
Yeah.
Yep, and we probably don't want to call it a spur right now, that's just...
Spur came to mind, I can't imagine why.
That's just...
All right. An on-ramp, yes, okay. An on-ramp, okay, all right.
Yeah, handicapped accessibility.
So we have need of an executive session, and we're inviting Ed Woods, who is our newly-elected, um, Select Board member, into this executive session. It's for the purposes of contracts.
Jeannie, can I just note, Jim Carroll did ask me to let folks know that he's heading north to Montpelier to avoid trying to drive north in the snowstorm tomorrow. That's why he's not here tonight.
Okay, yes, thank you very much. All right, all right, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved, and I just, yeah, oh, yes, no decision will be, will be made at, at this meeting. Where, are we also inviting the Hales to be?
Yes, we are inviting the Hales to come in.
So that needs to be in the record, I believe, as well.
Okay, so the Hales and Ed Woods.
We have a consultant, it's just not on the system, so...
Okay, and a consultant, all right.
Okay, we can take those minutes when the time comes, but yes, thank you.
Is there a motion?
No.
Yeah, I thought I made that.
Oh, you made the motion, right.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.